This meeting of the Margate Planning Board, as of June 23, 2022, is called order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tom Collins.
Here.
Richard Patterson.
Here.
Michael Cristaldi. Jim Galantino.
Here.
Margaret Gubernalty.
Here.
Craig Palmisano.
Here.
Stephen Jasecki.
Here.
Remy Pelosi. Michael Richmond.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of the minutes of May 26, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Like to hear another motion for the approval of decisions and resolutions, number 31, 2022, 200 North Osborne LLC, number 32, 2022, Todd Katz, number 33, 2022, Lou and Rona Fromm, number 34, 2022, Sherri and Simon Dratfield, and number 35, 2022, Four North Gladstone LLC.
I'll make a motion. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion passes. Leo?
All right, there's two applications on the agenda that are going to be moved to July 28, 2022. The first is Neon Karen Modell, 11 South Clarendon Avenue, block 103.01, lot 12. That'll be heard July 28, 2022, 6:30 PM. In this room, the applicant will not be required to republish and renotice. And the other one, Stacy Asbell and Andrew Levin, 10 South Thurlow Avenue, block 121, lot 14, that'll also be heard July 28, 2022. In this room, at 6:30 PM, the applicant will not be required to republish or renotice. It doesn't look like anyone's here for those applications, but if anyone is, you're more than welcome to stay, but you can leave if you want.
I've got a question.
Sure.
They postponed three times. Doesn't that make sense they shouldn't renotice? I mean, it's people, you know, it's from back in March that they first, people were first noticed.
It's really discretionary with the board. Chris told me, requested I make the announcement, so I made it, but, you know, if the board wants to insist, I, to tell you the truth, I think he is going to renotice this one.
Okay.
In my conversation with Chris, I think he's going to renotice.
Okay. Roger?
Did you want to say something about? Let me get Roger sworn in, Mr. McLarnan. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're going to give tonight will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, the first case is Jeffrey and Jody Pactor, 5 East Callmore Circle, block 509.02, lot 95, located in the S40 zoning district seeking sea variance relief for setbacks and possibly others in order to expand, construct a new front deck. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLarnan?
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board members. I did not do a report, prepare a report for this application due to the nature of it, and also I just wanted to explain, I spent a lot of time with the Packers on this, with the surveyor of record. They want to expand their front porch, so a small corner of it will be in a front yard land, a front yard setback based on prevailing front yard setbacks. It's a very small triangular shape. You know, we discussed putting these steps there. If the steps are located where that triangular shape is, they would not be here tonight. But per our discussion earlier today, that if, you know, it's not costing them any extra money to appear here tonight, they already spent the money that they needed to spend, so they, they're coming here tonight. What they're proposing really proposes no detriment to the neighborhood, to the application, to what they're doing. My only request would be, recommendation to the board is that they have to comply with that landscaping shrubs to screen that porch and possibly add a street tree or two, right? Other than that, it's, it's a very basic application. I felt bad that they had to come here for this small, de minimis corner.
Just real quick on what the flag is saying, because of the curves and the traffic going today, the street trees might have to wait up there. And it's a speedway now because of what they did.
They could put the street trees behind the sidewalk.
Could if you wanted to, but I'm just saying.
Tom.
With all those trees around your pool, you're saying that?
Hey, I'm just saying, it's putting it out there in the front and the curb is dangerous, that's all.
So do they need to speak, or can the board just ask questions?
They need to speak, they need to quantify what they're requesting.
Okay.
I can't speak for them, but I can provide them some guidance and what they're seeking and provide the board some background of why they're here.
Okay.
I, in my opinion, this could be easily approved and nobody will complain about a thing.
Whichever, Mr. or Mrs., or both, whichever one is going to speak, just come up, say her name, and I'll get you sworn in.
Stay right here, is this fine?
Sure.
Yeah, in the microphone.
Okay. My name's Jeffrey Pactor, I'm the husband.
Stop.
Okay, and you're 5 East Callmore Circle?
Yes.
And please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, so we're applying for a variance, I appreciate the time. We're, the full deck, 95% was approved, like 27 feet, four feet additional we're asking for. The only section that's not approved is three foot by, we got approved for two feet, we want an additional two foot depth. So our setbacks, 10 feet. We're the furthest house probably from any, any other house. Our neighbors are right on the sidewalk, they have no setback. We're just asking, with the additional two feet, we'll be still seven feet back, or eight feet back. We got approved for two, we, for, it's a, because my wife has a disability, she has a prosthetic leg, sometimes she doesn't wear the leg, she'll be in a wheelchair in the, where that notch is, where the depth is reduced, won't be enough room to put her in a wheelchair. We don't use the cement patio because of that reason right now. We're expanding it to get more functional use because of her disability, we want it deeper, so when she gets, at times she needs to be in a wheelchair, she has a prosthetic leg, in times she has to be in a walker, and right now she's not, fortunately, she's got a prosthetic leg on, she can walk when she, but sometimes her leg gets sore and she can't, she can't have a leg on. So, and like Roger said, it's going to be beautification, and it's far enough setback that it won't be intrusive to anyone.
Do you agree with the conditions, the landscaping conditions Roger talked about?
Can you explain what they are? We were planning the landscape in front of the deck. We're going to rip off, right now there's a, big bushes there, exactly where we're going to expand the deck, we're going to rip those bushes out.
Can we make it a condition, can we make it a condition that he meets with you and you approve the landscaping?
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. We're going to definitely plant new landscaping, make it beautiful.
I understand, but we'd like to make it a condition, sure it's happened, and Roger's very fair with it, so just.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
That way you don't have to show us tonight, we depend on Roger to say, yes, that's good enough.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Would you say the lot, the irregular lot, created a hardship on you because you weren't able to build your deck?
What created the hardship is not being able to leverage the cement patio, the condition it's in, and because of my wife's disability, we can't get the wheelchair out on it, so yes.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Galantino is saying is because of the unusual size and shape of this lot, it is creating somewhat of a.
Yeah, right.
Forgetting any medical reasons for you.
Yeah, because of the odd shape of the lot.
Because as you further down, it's pushing the front yard setback in.
Yeah.
Your house is square, but the road is not, so.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I would agree with that.
Watch me.
Yeah, thanks, I'll watch.
Any questions on the board? You finished?
Yes.
Anyone here from the public have any comments or questions? Public portion's closed. Would you read a motion, please?
Yeah, Roger, I'm looking at the survey, the required setbacks, 10.13 feet, and they're, and they're 9.99?
Correct. Well, yeah, they'll be, they're, they'll be around 7.99. About, just seven and a half, about.
Right, okay, as shown on the, on the survey. So it's a, it's a motion to grant a front yard setback variance to the, to the new porch, required setback is 10.13 feet, they're going to be about 7.99 feet, give or take, and the condition I'll note, are we doing, are we going to do the street tree? The street tree? I know we discussed.
No, they're going to discuss with Roger, Roger's going to approve the landscaping claim.
The street tree, though.
Do we want to impose a street tree? If they can put it behind the sidewalk, yeah, all right.
Okay, so, pose the condition that they'll, they'll put landscaping in front of the porch with a street tree that can be behind the sidewalk to be approved in Mr. McLarnan's discretion. So we need a motion in a second.
And the, the governor strip will be returned to grass and have the stones removed?
Well, that's part of the landscaping that you're going to talk to them about.
The stone on the curved side has to be now grass, that's the worst.
There's no stone now. We don't have stone, that's our neighbor.
It's just, yeah.
Is that the neighbor?
That's the neighbor.
Can't tell, all right.
There's some, yeah, perhaps, all grass.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor, I think this is very de minimis. The circle's the circle, you know, and everybody pays a penalty, and I happen to be lucky because I'm in the middle, but I think this will make a major improvement to your property and a major improvement to your health and well-being, so I think it's good for you and good for the city. I vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
I see no detriment to the neighbors, I see hardship being lessened by letting that one piece the size of a large pennant maybe, which is immaterial, so I vote yes.
Jim Galantino?
It's a beautiful home, and this porch is going to make it really look nice, and I agree the hardship is created by the unusual lot. That's a yes.
Margaret Gubernalty?
I agree with the other board members, I see no negative impact based upon, also based upon the odd lot shape, and enjoy the porch, I vote in favor.
Craig Palmisano?
Yeah, I agree with the other board members, you have a square porch, a curved street. I agree.
Stephen Jasecki?
Yes, I agree with the other members, I don't see any, any detriment at all, and I think it's an improvement. I agree.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I agree with the other board members, I think that curve of the lot is, you know, a hardship, and I'm going to approve it.
The application is approved with seven in favor and zero opposed.
Next case is David and Catherine Kenny, 8003 Lagoon Drive, block 1200, lot 34, located in the S60 waterfront zoning district seeking sea variance relief for setback to garage, garage side yard setback, maximum lot coverage, and possibly others, in order to renovate the existing structure and construct an attached garage. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLarnan?
Leo, you want to swear, Terry in first?
Yeah, sure. Ms. Cummings, just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Terry Cummings.
Oh, in the microphone, please.
Terry Cummings, 102 Arbor Court in Linwood, New Jersey.
Okay, and please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, and we'll accept their credentials, I assume?
Yes.
Thank you.
As an architect.
As an architect in the state of New Jersey, yes, Mr. Manos.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman and Board members, the report is based on the application of David and Catherine Kenny, 8003 Lagoon Drive, block 1200, lot 34, in the S60 WF zone. Planning and zoning report deemed complete, substantial benefit variance. The background is as follows, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct in addition to an existing single-family home located with an S60 WF zone. An attached garage is proposed to house one of three off-street parking spaces. The proposal creates variances mostly developed from extensions of existing non-conforming conditions. The existing driveway has two separate entrances and is partially in the public right-of-way, the driveway that connects the two driveway, curb cuts. The site also has no public sidewalk. Page two is the zoning chart for this WF, S60 WF zone, highlighted or shaded are the variances required. Continue on page three.
A question there, Roger. Landscape area total, you say existing non-conforming, but it's not. It's 13% now, they're making it worse.
But they need a variance. It is existing non-conforming because it's 13%. So that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, correct.
Got it. Section two on page three of the documents reviewed to generate the report, the plans reviewed below that in shaded in gray, including Terry Cummings' Plan A1. The variances required are as follows, front yard setback to the building, whereas the minimum front yard setback is 21.3 feet, 29 feet exist and 16 feet is proposed. The attached garage becomes part of the principal structure because it's connected to the building. Side yard setback on the right, whereas the minimum right yard, right side setback is 10 feet, 9.45 and 7.45, 7.5 feet exist, and 9.17 feet is proposed. So it's an expansion of a non-conforming setback. Landscape coverage total, whereas the required minimum landscape coverage, which is inverse of lot coverage, is 35%. 13% exists and 9% is proposed. Again, it's an expansion of a non-conforming situation. Landscape coverage for the front yard, whereas the required minimum front yard landscape coverage is 60%, about 50% exists and much less than 50% is proposed. The zoning chart said that complied, but I disagree with that. Side yard setback to the driveway, this is being created by relocating the driveway, whereas the minimum side yard setback for any driveway is one feet, one foot, about two feet exists and zero feet is proposed. Again, to me, that, that's a curable variance that could be eliminated. The driveway as proposed is at the property line.
You mean all the way on the left-hand side?
Yes. That's being relocated.
Okay. So are you saying that they just push that every one foot, it would be okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the existing driveway is about two feet. One waiver has been requested, has a copy of an area map showing all lots within 200 feet. Comments that the shrub deficit can easily be brought into conformance, I did not list that as a variance because in my opinion, that can be resolved pretty easily. The waiver may be granted provided that testament and oath represents that the site isn't changed, actually it's an area map. There's no detriment to the application if that waiver is granted. The right side setback is currently not existing, or existing non-conforming, and the addition is not complying by half, or about 10 inches. Front yard setback is measured to the principal building, which the attached garage is now part thereof and requires a variance. The distance to the garage being required of 18 feet is measured to the garage door to ensure a parking space is provided in the driveway, which is not applicable in this case. The proposed parking space configuration will not function properly and turning motions cannot be made without driving onto the lawn or landscaping as, as rearranged. No public sidewalk exists, the area within the public right-of-way is not to be included within the front yard landscaping areas, and shall not be used as justification for paving the front yard. The front yard landscaping calculations provided by the architect, I have an issue with that, I think they're incorrect. 2,175 square feet at 60% yields 1,300 square feet to comply, 550 square feet is being provided for landscaping. I think the front yard distance is being misunderstood. The proposed driveway is closer to the property than line than permitted, again, that can be easily rectified, in my opinion. No details are provided for the depressed curb, driveway, vertical curve, et cetera, as they're being relocated, and the recommendations are in the report, and we can discuss those after the testimony.
Mr. Pelosi?
Thank you, I'm sorry. May I proceed? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I recall, see, on behalf of the applicant, David and Catherine Kenny, just by way of getting rid of one of the variances early on, and we hadn't gone through this too closely, but Terry and I have been talking, the variance for the driveway to be up against the property line, we're going to waive that and move the driveway over. That's silly, it's a foot, it's not going to hurt or help anybody, so we don't even need to deal with that, so we can eliminate that as one of the variances to begin with, which is marked at Mr. McLarnan's number five, so we're not going to address that at all. The goal for tonight's application, obviously, is to add a garage to the existing property where there is none, property is located along Lagoon Drive, where homes similar to this have been developed and redeveloped over the course of the past few years. Kenny's recently purchased a property with the hope of having themselves and their children spend more time here, they're full-time residents, they couldn't be here tonight because they're away on a trip, so they did want to be here however, and it's just really to perk up the house and to give them a little more room for storage and parking, which is the purpose of the garage. Lagoon Drive, as you know, is a fairly well-traveled street, but there isn't much actual parking on the street, so the goal of the application is to, when I say there's no parking on the street, there's ample places to park, but people generally don't park along Lagoon unless they're going to a house on Lagoon, it's not like the beach block or if you're going into the crowded area in the parkway. So, as part of the application, the one thing which I find to be fairly important, which Terry will point out in a second, there are currently two curb cuts, each of which are 18 feet wide, 36 feet total, that's being lessened to being 12-foot wide apiece, making the curb cuts 24, a betterment to the city, which is pretty substantial there along Lagoon. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Terry, you've been sworn, you've been accepted with your credentials as an expert in the field of architecture, so walk us through the project, Terry, and the variances, we need, obviously eliminating number five, because that's no longer going to be a variance based on moving the driveway.
So Dave and Kathy Kenny bought this property, which is completely built out, the house is existing, the backyard and its pool and deck is all existing. They came to me and they wanted simply to add a garage, a garage for the car and for a better location for some of the garbage cans, the bicycles for the kids. So in looking at the project, knowing our limited space we had to work with, it made the most sense to locate the new garage here in front of the house with a side entrance garage. Now you can see the house as it is today, which is sort of a very flat facade and not great curb appeal. So the intent of the project was to dress up the house, give it more curb appeal, make it more interesting while providing the storage they need. So you can see here is our addition of the garage with some fancy windows in the front, adding a lot of more interest and curb appeal to the house. In addition, to make the garage work, to be able to pull a car inside, the existing porch at the front stays the same, we simply relocated the steps to the side so that we can enter in and out of the garage with the car without having any hazard. No changes are being done for the house whatsoever, it's only the addition of the garage, and one of our first variances that we're asking for is the right side variance of approximately 10 feet. And the reason for this is so that we can line up the new garage nice and cleanly with the sidewall, so that we can take that roof line and simply continue it and run it over the top, so it's a nice neat design and not a lot of jogs as you look at the house. On the other side, you can see the entry to the garage, where we have the garage door, and we provided a nice overhang that you see here, covering not only the porch, but the front steps, which is really nice, so when you're out in the rain and stuff, you're not walking up front steps. There is no connection from the garage to the house. In the limited amount of space we had to work with, they would have to exit the garage and walk those steps and go into the house, and that's a given, and they understood that. In order to keep the garage as little impact on the street as possible, is the reason we've turned it sideways, made it more attractive, but we just don't have the space here to meet the requirements, so we are asking for the variance to keep that front wall at 16 feet back from the property line.
15 or 16?
16.
16.
16.
Correct.
And as we said, we wanted to cut down the amount of curb cut and bring it down, so we've cut these over-wide curb cuts that aren't necessary down to simply very comfortable 12-side, 12-foot wide curb cuts. So it makes it very easy to bring your car in, park it, or pull into the garage, pull out, pull down, and pull out, making it a nice, easy way to move around the driveway.
Now, Terry, the house that presently exists is the same distance to the property line as the proposed garage.
The right side, yes, exactly.
So the right side where the garage, if the board sees fit to grant this, is currently lined up with the house, it doesn't expand past the existing footprint?
No, it doesn't, and another thing to note, that the lot next door is vacant and has been vacant for a very long time, so keeping the addition to the right side where there are no neighbors was an intentional part of the design as well.
But while we're on that subject of the right side setback, you have one plan that shows nine feet five inches, another plan that shows nine feet two inches, and you have a survey that shows 9.2 feet. Which is it?
It's nine foot two, that is a typo. The computer picked up.
Nine foot two or nine foot two inches?
Nine foot two inches.
Got it.
The computer picked up the wrong line and dimensioned it.
Not nine point two, Mr. Chairman.
Nine foot, yeah, as on this plan.
Yes.
It's the other places, it shows different.
Correct.
So the garage isn't moving any closer to the vacant lot, we can't say just because it's a vacant lot, it doesn't matter, because sometimes someone can build a house, and we still have to respect the neighbor, but you've designed this in a way that if the board sees fit to grant it, nothing's moving closer, and there will be a nine-foot corridor down the side, at least the thing you have to look at.
Do they own that lot?
No.
And in addition to that, we kept the roof line where it is closest to a single-story roof line here, where it's not a tall one, but lined up with this side, we have a nice low roof, so it doesn't, again, feel like you're overshadowing the, the house next door, should they build one.
I'm sorry. Talk about the change in the front with regard to not only the curb cut, but the way the parking would be configured, that we won't have three stacked cars here now, we'll have a little more room for circulation.
And after many various designs about the driveway, the homeowners really liked this one, because it lets them put two cars here, one foot over, and still plenty of room, and safe to come down the steps, so you won't be walking into a car, and enough room that you can comfortably back out of the garage and come around and go to the street.
Mr. Patterson, Mr. McLarnan, one of the things which we are very conscious of here, we know how the board doesn't like the large curb cuts, especially two of them, so when the Kennys went to Terry and we started talking about this, we told them right off the bat, you have to lessen the distance on your curb cut, and right off the bat, they said, fine. It wasn't a situation where we were trying to keep 18 and 18, obviously, the line, where the board has been, where the city's gone by way of its parking plan.
So Terry, talk about what amount of space exists between the two curb cuts if someone wanted to park in front of the house on Lagoon.
Oh, yeah, you have room for two cars to comfortably park there, where before you'd only have space for one car.
And this is located in an area kind of close to Mini Creek, it's on an area that's otherwise fairly well-traveled, is your opinion that the parking situation there won't be worsened, but rather we'd get a betterment by this design if the board grants it?
Absolutely, this does not have the same parking issue that the beach side has, or any of the busier areas, this is very quiet in this area, there's never been a parking issue.
I have a comment on that, I think the proposed parking layout is, makes things worse. The proposed parking layout is worse than the existing parking layout. The proposed parking layout is worse than the existing parking layout. You can't... If that car is parked on the two left spaces, if they're full, you can't get out of the garage. The car on the end can't get out either, so you have one usable space. The existing location of the parking, the existing layout, all three cars, if they're occupied in all three spaces there, all three can get out, independent of each other. This proposed layout is, in my opinion, no good.
Would it be better to keep this stuff? I mean, we thought that would be worse, but it's better. But, look, the Kennys wouldn't...
You could move those bushes over a little bit.
Here.
Meaning?
The ones where you turn into the garage?
Right.
Yeah.
Knock a couple feet off that. Gives you a big turning area that you could get in there.
We would be happy to do that. The intent was to provide as much landscaping as physically possible.
And then, I mean, that's what the goal was, to give back respectfully if the board thinks that would be better to do it the other way. We definitely do that.
Yeah. Well, you're not going to like the next part, because you need to get rid of that other driveway. You're going to make that landscaping.
That's the part I'd like to see give back.
You're starting out at... Hang on a second. You're starting out at thirteen percent landscape coverage, and you're making it worse. You're going to nine... I mean, that's... Look, it exists. There's nothing you can do about it. That's the way it was. But you have a chance here. You're taking that nice landscaping on the front and making a garage. I've got no problem with your garage. You should get rid of the circular driveway, which is a problem. Landscape where all that is. Bring those bushes back a couple feet. That gives you a clear path into the garage.
If they're going to take away that secondary, that other driveway, and that's going to give you all that landscaping, that little patch on the left, would that help if we got rid of that, so that they would have more of a clear... You know what I'm saying? Or is it... You know what I mean?
Yeah, all the way to the end.
Yeah. And then, you could almost... It looks like there's almost running the stack to cars there. Maybe I'm wrong.
I was looking to see about the stacking backward towards the bay.
Do you make that eighteen again?
No, this would be one... Yeah, it would be eighteen.
So, you go back to the eighteen?
Right.
Yes, it should be one eighteen on the left, and eliminate the other one.
You know what? I would tell you this. We talked to the Kennys, but we're okay with that. We thought this would be a better... We thought this would be better received by the board, because we are getting rid of two large curb cuts. If the alternative would be to keep an eighteen and to eliminate one of the other eighteens and do landscaping there, we're fine with that.
All right.
And that's kind of what we... It's funny, we spent a lot of time trying to get into your heads, thinking what you wanted versus what the Kennys wanted, so it's... That's fine.
But we can't just leave it up in the air where that starts and ends, so...
Okay, so, it would be respectfully, Mr. Patterson, I think what we would do is...
Well, actually, I think they don't need to get rid of this thing.
If this landscaping would be...
Hang on one second.
Do you think you could get rid of it?
Let me just overlook a little bit. Maybe...
Right, because it's still bad. This guy can get out. You could probably get rid of the square.
Could you both come up here and look at something?
Yeah. But just prior to that, Terry actually might be able to explain what works that we just discussed.
I'm going to come up, because I can't sit here.
So, what she had just said, I don't want to speak for you, but I want to... To keep this like it is, a still a foot off the property line, and...
That doesn't show the landscaping.
No, because we're going to get rid of this. It'll look like this, and then the landscaping will be all in here.
What we'll do is, we will simply cut this away, keep this basically as it is, with the stairs moved over here, and keep that where it is. So, we're basically cutting that away and redoing this spot in the same spot that it is now.
Right. But we want the landscaping over as far as possible without interfering with the parking system.
Well, it'll be all in here, Mr. Patterson, because...
But I don't want you to cut it here or here. You know, I want it cut as far over as possible. That's why I don't want to leave open.
Okay, so...
If you could... Do they come back and look here, and still... Or do we have to call a recess?
No. If you have an illustration, you can show them.
I think we soften this up, move this over eighteen, the radius coming out here. Get rid of that, and you've got all landscaping. This guy can get out. This guy can get out. So, connect. Leave this here. Just soften it.
Add some landscaping there.
Well, leave this... Just cut this smaller, so he has an easy way out. And then, bring this over. Don't cut this here. Bring this over here, so you have your eighteen feet. However, you can get your eighteen feet in. I just don't... I don't want you to cut it here, here. I want you to have as much landscaping here as possible.
It might be better a little bit over this way.
Yeah, you can do that. Just leave enough space to get a little bit of landscaping here.
Get some landscaping here, move this over, and then have the landscaping up to the eighteen feet.
Good.
And make this all landscaping here.
Yep, all of that will be landscaping.
That way, you have three usable spaces. And ease in and out of the garage.
And we get rid of the curb cut.
Get rid of a curb cut, get more landscaping. We might end up with more landscaping than before.
And the pavers that are on the city property, too, right?
Yes. That'll go, too.
All the pavers across the front garden, except where the driveway is.
Yes, yes. Beautiful. More landscaping.
Okay.
We practically thought this was ours. And you... See, that's the problem. If you do that much...
Well, we keep changing the rules.
Keep moving the ball.
So, I think by doing that, your front yard landscape...
It's going to go way up, right. I don't know if it'll comply, but it'll certainly be...
It'll be no worse than what it is.
So, just by way of explanation here, we're going to eliminate, for the record, one curb cut. We're going to keep the parking with the other eighteen-foot curb cut, but as Mr. Chairman said, it's just going to be shifted over a little bit towards the bay, and we're going to cut this corner a little bit. And then, this is all going to be gone, and it'll be landscaping. So, we submit a new plan to Roger, of course, but... And again, I apologize, that's the plan...
But you've seen his plan where he drew the line, so...
Correct. So, we would amend, and obviously, we have to do the landscaping calculations. And look, I apologize, because a lot of this was with me, when Terry said, well, what do you think they want? I said, I think they would like to see that plan, but, you know, I'm not generally right.
Well, you're not experienced before this board, so...
Not at all. So, thanks. That's good. So, we'll go with that amended plan, and we would rest. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
So, we're left with two variances?
I think we should...
Now, do the variances, because they might not meet the front landscaping or whatever.
I do have a question, actually, about the front variance now. Because our garage, the front garage, is considered part of the house, and the front landscaping is based on the front line of the structure, right? So, our front yard is sixteen foot back and the width of the lot. Is that correct? So, I make sure I calculate this properly.
No, it's where the house is now, twenty-nine feet. You're getting the variance to put that garage in there, so that twenty-nine feet...
Is everything here? Is everything...
Oh, it doesn't? So, this is outside of the front yard then? Because the front yard now becomes...
That doesn't exist, Terry.
It doesn't exist. Listen to Tom, you're right. Just is everything forward to that.
Got it. Okay. All right.
I think your total landscape coverage, even though it may not comply, that variance goes away for the total, because you are increasing it.
Because they're at thirteen... They're not going to get to thirty-five percent, but I think Roger's point is they're at thirteen now. They're not making that worse.
Right. It won't go down as it is on Roger's report. It'll definitely go up. We just don't know the exact numbers, but Terry's final plan will show the exact numbers.
Front yard landscaping will probably...
Is the front number subject to Roger's approval, then? Because we don't know if it's a fully known...
Yeah.
Which number? Front yard landscape coverage.
A little provided.
The world grading of the...
Random variance.
We're grading them by variance.
But not for nine percent.
No.
That should be subject to Roger's final...
That makes sense.
Yeah, because we're not sure. It actually might comply, but as Mr. Collins said, I'm not sure it will. It'll be a variance, but it'll be a betterment of what's there now versus making it worse, which is what this plan is.
It's giving you more work, right?
It's all right. He doesn't do it anyway.
The front yard will still likely go down, you think? The front yard landscaping will still likely go down.
I think it might be a push. If there's anything, it might be a minor variance, say, of the... Brand variance up to ten percent.
Okay.
Just for the record, I would like to just ask Terry a couple quick questions to establish the positive and negative criteria, just in case.
Terry, you've designed a plan. We've heard what the board has by way of input. Is it your opinion, as a professional licensed architect, that the plan as prepared is a betterment of what's there now, and that the variances can be granted without any negatives associated with them?
I do.
And to the extent that there could possibly be a negative associated, the benefits of this plan would greatly outweigh any such detriment, correct?
Greatly.
Okay. Do you see any reason why the board should not grant this based on what Mr. McLaren, Mr. Patterson, and other members of the board suggested?
No. I would never come in front of the board if I didn't think it was a good idea.
We know that.
That's all I have, Mr. Patterson. We would rest subject to asking Ms. Cummings more questions, if anybody has...
I do want to add that I think Terry did a good job blending the aesthetic appeal of that garage with the rest of the building. I think it really looks like it's been there. Wouldn't want to clean those windows.
Yeah, I hear somebody.
We would rest. Thank you.
Anything from the board? Any other questions, comments? Anyone here from the public have any comments or questions? Public portion's closed. Could you read a motion, please? I'm sorry. One moment.
The building coverage is good.
All right. So, it's a motion for C. variance relief. Need a motion in a second. The variances that are... We're clear about, there's a front yard setback to the building, sixteen feet proposed, because the garage becomes part of the house, where twenty-one point three feet is required. Side yard setback on the right side is at nine feet, two inches, where ten feet's required, and that's the same side yard setback of the house. Number five on Roger's list, the side yard setback to the driveway, that's clearly going to go away. Then, there's two landscaping matters we have to deal with. Total landscaping, right now, they're thirteen percent existing. Thirty-five percent's required, but as long as they have at least thirteen... As long as they maintain the status quo, that won't be a variance, and we believe that that's going to go up. But to the extent there's a minor deviation, I'll note that as a variance. And then, the front yard landscaping, same thing. Sixty percent's required. They're at about fifty percent now. There's a chance that that is going to still decrease, so we'll note that there's a front yard landscaping variance. They will provide calculations to Roger as to those numbers. And then, the conditions... There's also a waiver from the area map. The conditions will say the applicant will comply with any representations it made during the hearing, which is going to involve basically eliminating the right-side curb cut, widening the existing curb cuts, one eighteen-foot curb cut, with... And kind of, it'll, I guess, slant over towards the garage, for lack of a better term, but we also visually depict it, and then, everything, all pavers to the right of the eighteen-foot driveway will become landscaping. But... And then, they'll submit a revised plan to be approved in Roger's discretion.
I would say that location of that remaining curb cut will be adjusted to meet the turning radius of coming out.
Okay.
One note, Mr. Madison, I noticed in Mr. McLaren's report regarding sidewalk. There's no other sidewalk along that side of the street at all, so we would ask...
The next property has it. The next-door neighbor has it. And all... Going towards... At all port, they're all there. And when they build a house, and that empty lot will be a sidewalk. But we didn't bring it up, so I don't know why you did.
Well, it's in the report. I want to make sure we understand.
At some point in time, we're have to tie up this thing.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Tom Collins?
Well, Terry, after a lot of giving tape, I think you did a very nice job in getting this a... Like I said, you're hiding it in. It's almost as if it's a den instead of a garage, the way you designed it. It's so nice, the way it fits in. I don't see any negative impacts to the neighborhood, eliminating one curb cut, increasing landscaping, especially with the green space that we need, and you're so close to the water, we need the drainage. I think it's all positive criteria for the application, so I vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
I also vote in favor. I think you did a great job with the garage. I never had a problem with that. I think with your changing to increase the landscaping on the front like that and eliminate the driveway, I think that's going to enhance the... Are you listening to me?
No.
Terry?
Are you listening?
What if he was still talking? Did I hear that again?
No.
Eric?
I think the way the changes that you made is going to enhance the look of the house along with the garage. It's going to look like with everyone else. I think it was a great job designing that garage and looking like part of the house, but I think the whole appearance now is going to be much better, and I approve.
Jim Gallantino?
The house needs a garage. It definitely needs a garage. There's nowhere else to put the car. I agree with Rich, and I approve the application and stand.
Margaret Cooper Nolte?
I approve the application as well. It certainly is better than what is existing now. I don't see any negative impacts. Certainly benefits outweigh the detriment. I like that we eliminated a curb cut. I think the front yard variance does not have a negative impact. Thank you for adding landscaping, and I approve of the application.
Craig Palmisana?
Yeah, I also approve. Changes are welcomed, and the garage looks beautiful with the windows in it. It's a nice touch, and I approve.
There's also an extra parking spot on the street.
Yes.
Stephen Giasecki?
Yeah, I think, as discussed, it's a much better plan than what you guys came up with. And we're adding more landscaping, which I think is very, very important, so I approve.
Michael Richmond?
I approve of all the other board members have to say. Eliminating the curb cut, more landscaping, I think the garage fits in actually with the house, so I'm going to go further.
The application is approved with seven in favor and zero opposed.
Next case, Daniel and Kathy Dubic, seventy-eight oh four Atlantic Avenue, block five point oh two, lot nine, located in the S-30 zoning district, seeking C. variance relief for located in the S thirty zoning district, seeking C. variance relief for front yard landscaping and possibly others in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying has been satisfied. Mr. McLarnin?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members. I did not generate a report for this as the only variance needed is a front yard landscape variance, but I do want clarification on which front yard is it? Is it a combination of the two? Because front yards are, we have two front yards. So which one is it? And also in the calculations, the surveyor has deleted the existing setbacks, which is, the ordinance does not call for that. So if, if the existing setbacks were included, what would they be? And it also, he only does the setbacks for the Atlantic Avenue frontage, not the Essex Avenue frontage. So other than that, I mean, the ordinance allows down to fifty percent from sixty percent, the front yard steps encroach and take up, occupy space that could be landscaping. That is not the case here, so they came in for the variance, but I just, we need clarification on these calculations.
Thank you, Mr. McLarnin, Mr. Chairman Eric Olson, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Dubic, who are sitting behind us tonight. With me tonight is Robert Loleo. He's a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey, so Mr. Manos, if you don't mind, I'll have Mr. Loleo sworn to qualified.
Sure. Mr. Loleo, just your name and business address for the record, please.
Robert Loleo, two nineteen W. Avenue, Hamilton, New Jersey.
Please raise your right hand. You swear in front of the testimony I'll give tonight will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
We're familiar with Mr. Loleo and accept his qualifications.
Bob, you've been tasked to design a house, which is the design. It requires a couple of variances. And obviously, Mr. McLarnin pointed out that there might be some questions regarding setbacks and regarding the area of the property, which may or may not be the front that we're referring to. So we're all here early. Why don't you walk us through the plan and tell us why this house needs some variances and why they're just.
So the, the variance we're asking for is front yard landscaping on Essex Avenue, Atlantic Avenue, so there's five foot setback, and it's a hundred percent landscaped. There's no paving or driveways on that side of the street. And currently, we're asking for fifty-three point two percent or sixty percent required.
I, I must, I don't think I've heard you, it's on the Essex side that the, there's the deficiency?
Front yard landscaping on Essex Avenue.
So it's a hundred percent on the front?
It's a hundred percent on Atlantic.
On Atlantic?
And just.
But then that's, is it the, is it two separate yards or is it combined, Roger?
It's two separate yards, but they, I count each, each frontage goes to the building setback line. So it's, some overlaps.
But if you take both yards together, is it sixty percent?
Oh, well, it'd be well over that.
Yeah.
Both front yards?
Yeah.
Because the, the Atlantic side's a hundred percent, and the other.
Well, that's my question. If, if that's a hundred percent.
If you're counting both, it could go to about seventy.
Separately?
Robert, on the Atlantic Avenue side, it's just grass?
I guess we do, because we could have nothing on the one side and a hundred on the other. I'm.
I've always been counting both.
Yeah, no, you're right.
If you combine the two, it will be.
No, you're, you're right, because you could have no, no landscaping on Essex Avenue. It would make up the sixty percent on the front.
And they're both front, so it's still a variance. But the, the fact that there's a hundred percent coverage on Atlantic Avenue makes it a little softer to come around that corner onto Essex, but it's still a variance. So Bob, please keep walking us through.
I also wanted, I wanted to point out that we're also exceeding the total landscape requirement. And we're not proposing a front entry stair on Essex Avenue. If we included a stair on Essex, we'd be allowed fifty percent landscaper requirement. So that's why I tried to keep it over the fifty percent mark.
Robert, on the Atlantic Avenue side, is that all just grass?
Yes.
Because the building, when you look at, when you look at the detail on eight two oh two, I mean, it just looks like walls down there, that you're looking at.
Fifty percent of the landscaping will have to be, there'll be fifty percent shrubs on the both front yards.
Shrubs, that's what I, yeah, that's what I, I didn't see a shrub detail anywhere.
We didn't prepare a landscape plan, but.
Okay.
That's the requirement.
Yeah, because here it looks just barren with bricks on the Atlantic Avenue.
Correct.
It's not going to be like that.
No, there'll be, there'll be a lot of, there'll be half the, my shrub count in. On Atlantic Avenue, we have to have thirty-six shrubs total, so half could, half of that will be.
That'll make a big difference, yeah.
Bob, was the coverage for the front yard landscaping on Atlantic Avenue?
A hundred percent. Because I have a five foot setback to porch. I go to the setback line.
Setback line of the house?
Right, but the porches are within, are beyond the front yard, the five foot setback.
But the average setback to the house is nine point feet, zero three feet.
It doesn't count under the porches.
Doesn't that count? What's under the porches doesn't count, so you're not a hundred percent.
So what percent are we on Atlantic?
Well, that's what we're raising.
I'd have to do that calculation, but it's going to be over sixty percent.
I would agree, it's over sixty percent.
So then basically, you're just asking for six point eight percent variance on Essex Avenue alone. Is that correct?
We're, well, you're saying fifty. We're fifty-three point two percent.
Two.
And with sixty percent required.
Right, that's all you need on, just on that side.
Correct, that's the only variance.
Hey, Bob. Bob, over here. The air handler in the garage? You're, you're eighty-ten, so you got to be four feet. And your grade's seven and some change. And we're seeing a lot of the air handlers that are put in the garages create a ceiling height of less than seven feet.
Correct.
It doesn't count as a parking spot for, for your parking. You have to maintain seven feet for a parking spot.
We could adjust, I could adjust that a little bit.
We notice the ductwork that comes out of it projects down into the ceiling, and we're seeing a lot of five, six foot ceiling heights, and that's on account of the parking space.
Garages.
And you're at almost, you're twenty feet in parking, so if you put any trunk lines on it, it'll create a headroom issue. Right, Roger?
And I would eliminate that parking space.
Jim, they, well, they need three spaces.
I have four, I have three spaces, but I have four.
You have four, right.
So. I could double check that on the.
Okay.
Final drawing, but I think if I had to, I could reevaluate it, because I have a unit on the first floor also.
Okay.
I could always move one up to the attic.
I have a basic question. You're starting with an empty lot. What is it about the house that you couldn't make it conform? You wanted a bigger house, you wanted.
Well, it was, it's the corner lot, and that's why I stepped back the porches as much as possible. It's only a six foot porch, and then the, the part on the corner projects a little bit beyond that, so.
How big's the lot?
Only fifty by sixty-two and a half.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not that big. So we're complying with parking, we're complying with where the air, air handlers are going to go, we're front yard compliant on Atlantic. It really is just turning the corner onto Essex, and we don't get a benefit of the stair deduct there. So we're still short landscaping.
So the, yeah, so the front yard landscape area is only three hundred and eighty-seven square feet on Essex Avenue, and we're required four hundred, if I was to meet it, it's four hundred and thirty-six square feet. So it's only a difference of forty-nine square feet of landscaping. It's not, the, the percentage is incremental, it seems incrementally worse, but if you actually go by the area, it's not, it's not really that much area. It's just the si, small size of the front yard.
You know how far the property line is from the sidewalk?
Uh, there's probably another ten feet.
Ten feet?
No, I think four.
Well, the, from the property line to the curb?
The sidewalk, the inside edge of the sidewalk.
Oh, that's probably like three, four feet.
That doesn't count, but that's going to be landscaping.
Yeah, it looks like.
So it'll look like there's more landscaping. We just don't get credit for that.
Well, sometimes the property line's on the sidewalk, so in this case, you have three extra feet of landscaping that you're not getting.
We're not getting credit for, but we're going to.
When it's there.
Right.
So if it wasn't a, if it wasn't a quarter lot, then you wouldn't even be here, right?
No.
Right.
Are there steps off, off the front yard porch? Well, I don't see it. See if you got one in the back.
There, there's a stair in the back, but it's a ground floor entry on Essex Avenue. There's a ground floor foyer in the interior. I didn't, we didn't include the stair because of the corner lot and the slight triangle issues and trying to get the park in. But that's why I mentioned if we put the stair, the porch would be the same size if you included the stair, and we would be allowed fifty percent landscape coverage.
But where's the entrance?
Inside.
Main entrance is, it's, I don't know what plan you're on, but it's a ground floor entrance.
Oh, I see. I didn't, I was on the wrong page. I see. So it's next to the garage, inside, the stairs are inside. Okay.
So my, the, the six foot porch, if I was to conform, I would have to stretch the porch back two feet, and it would only leave me like a four foot, four inch porch.
Bob, you've answered the question of the board. You've designed the house based on what the Dubics had asked. Do you see any negative that could possibly be associated with this if the board were to grant the variances?
I do not.
And if there were some negative somehow associated with that, would the benefits greatly outweigh any such negative?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson, we would rest at this time, subject to recalling Mr. Loleo to the extent the board had questions, but I think we're ready to submit this for a vote.
Anything for the board? Any other questions? Anyone here from the public?
I would.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would like to, if you included the existing structure in the setback calculations, he, he might not even need a variance for that. It would be less.
This thing is. They didn't give me the actual numbers, that's the problem.
Right, for some reason, he excluded it.
I think they think it doesn't count. It's interesting, we get that a lot now.
Well, that happens all the time.
They just delete the subject.
Right. I, I.
But you have much to tell them. I mean, you guys know what's happening.
You know how hard it is for the surveyors to.
Yeah.
I, I guess my point is, if you included that, that variance, it wouldn't be worse, it would be.
Better.
Right.
Yeah.
Although interestingly, and this, this is an interesting question, if we included that setback, sorry, to the extent we wanted to get a recalculation of the setback, that would eliminate the variance.
Correct.
Could the porches be wider?
The porch is at two point five four.
Two point, two point five four?
It would be a minute, probably.
Right, but you would include the neighbor next door at one oh two, which was eliminated as a low.
Whatever, we can't calculate.
Well, I know you can't, but the question is, in the event that a survey were performed, and it showed that the existing subject house gave the applicant a benefit, could the porches be wider?
If you have a by right.
Need a variance?
Well, maybe not.
If you don't need a variance, you could do whatever you want.
We, we didn't, we didn't look at it, and it seemed not to make much of a difference with the, the actual numbers and what's, what's there now.
All right.
It was pretty, pretty close.
Well, you'll find out, Al. We're going to get for the variance now. You'll find that out later.
Like Mr. Richmond said, if it turns out that that number helps, then the variance won't be necessary, it'll go away, and perhaps the porches could be wider. But in the event it doesn't help, we're still needing the variance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and the house is still standing, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Original.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why it counts as part of the measurements.
It might be helpful.
But that's something you can do. If it ends up you don't need a variance, you can move the porch out. You don't need to come back to us. You're, it, it would be by right. You don't want to come back in front of us. All right, anything else on the board? Leo?
Sure. It's a, a C. variance motion, one C. variance for the front yard landscaping along Essex Avenue. Sixty percent's required, fifty-three point two percent's proposed. Just note is the conditions, applicant will comply with any representations made on the record, which includes Jimmy's comments. That's it, we need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Tom Collins.
Did a lot of talking tonight on a little bit of grass. I think that the proposed project that you're doing is really nice. It's going to enhance that corner. It's going to be a tough corner for you, but it's going to enhance the corner. And I think what you're doing is, is a big improvement to the neighborhood. I think you should do well, and I approve.
Richard Patterson.
I don't like to approve any variances with a bare land, but you have to listen to the testimony at the, at the hearing, and the fact that it's a corner lot. The biggest thing for me is your, your porch is already six feet. That's small for a porch, and I think it's, shows that you're trying to really meet what you can. I mean, I, I think that works in your favor that you're, I don't want to say not being greedy, but not being greedy and, and trying to get fit as close as you can within the rules. I, I, I just don't see any detriments here because you're meet, you're more than the total landscaping, and the biggest yard that's anybody's going to see is the Atlantic Avenue yard, so I see detriments, but not anything that would outweigh the benefits here, so I approve.
Jim Gallantino.
Bob, nice house. Eric, good job presenting, presenting the case. The actual new house takes up less landscaping than the old house. It's, the house is maxed out. I'm pretty sure it's like one very narrow line down the side. With the front porch, because the front porch, I think, almost comes out to the sidewalk. And just for that reason alone, with the landscaping that we need more of on that street, because it's all very tight, if you look down that street, with the porch is coming close to the roadway, it would add a lot of greenery to that street. On that note, I approve the application.
Margaret Cooper Nolte.
I agree with the other board members. It's certainly an improvement. The house is beautiful. There are no detriments, as I see, and I approve of the application.
Craig Palmisana.
I also agree with the other board members. Nice job, Bob. And with proper landscaping and bushes and shrubbery, it'll look beautiful. Thank you.
Stephen Giasecki.
You guys convinced me. There's going to be more landscaping? I, yeah, that's kind of true. I, I, I often hear that people trying to, they make an excuse as a corner house, it's got a problem, but a corner house is a corner house. And, and it is different than the rest of the houses on the block, and it should not be tried to set and look like that. But in this case, the rest of the board members got me convinced that it's okay, so I approve.
Michael Richmond.
Yeah, I, I approve. I think that the house is smaller than what was there before, and there's going to be a lot more landscaping, and it's a corner property, which I do consider a hardship, so I'm going to approve.
The application is approved with seven in favor and zero opposed.
Rest in a joint meeting?
No.
We have a couple of hours.
Take that, Richmond.
We have to go through this stuff?
No, we bragged about it last meeting. When he was in charge, he got out of here. We have things to discuss. It's a new salary ordinance for board members coming before the commission.
You want to take it, Roger?
Sure.
I have a question to read.
Yeah.
Somebody called me, uh.
Called you Mike?
It was on Quincy Avenue. Did we make Quincy Avenue? We did. Why didn't you do that?
When we made Atlantic Avenue, Verrupan Avenue. Verrupan Avenue four years ago?
Can you guys make sure you use the microphones? I know you're.
We had a consistent front yard setback.
Use the microphone.
Quincy Avenue, entire length, and for Vettner Avenue and a parkway exception. And the goal is to do that citywide. This prevailing front yard setback is nonsense. Somebody calls me and asks me, what's my front yard setback? I say, I don't know.
Right.
It shouldn't be that way, and you shouldn't have to force somebody.
I'm not just, Ren, I just don't remember, did, was that part of us or?
Yes, yes.
It was. What meaning was that?
You were in Vermont or Texas or somewhere.
I'm not going to remind.
Well, whatever.
That's for the Buffett fans.
Texas or whatever.
West Virginia.
So we did, that was a.
We did all of Quincy Avenue.
Wherever Mike was, I was with him, because I don't remember either.
Wait, what are you saying about Quincy?
We have a.
We're not talking about Quincy.
Oh, not Quincy.
No, 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 no. He did all of Quincy from beach to back.
Yes.
And the parkway.
No, no, the areas on the, on the zone.
We made the front yard setback.
So first block, north is eighteen feet, right? I don't. Oh, you don't know? Off the top here.
So can we hear the tapes on our approving this?
You can, you're welcome.
Go home, you go plenty of time.
Doesn't matter, they're governing body, I approve it.
I, I just, I just wasn't worried, but it doesn't, I don't care. I, I, you know, I think
that we should do what we're talking about, instead of having to pull shit, instead of having to stop.
The high and low.
Well, we have talked about neighborhood by neighborhood or area by area.
Right, okay.
We have all the measurements done, but, you know, it imposes a hardship on somebody to come in and expand a porch to determine, you know, they have to hire a surveyor to go four feet in each direction.
I totally agree with you.
That's not fair.
And they don't have to, surveyors are backfucked up anyway, they're.
Yeah, they don't put measurements on of that existing house.
All right, I'm done.
Okay. Before you, tonight is a consistency review for some minor ordinance changes. One is the City Margate City ordinance number eleven dash two thousand twenty-two, number twelve dash two thousand twenty-two, ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand twenty-two.
Where, which, what are we looking at? I get a whole lot of papers.
I'm reading the consistency review first.
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
Kind of gives a summary of.
Looks like this?
One of three, yes. All right, introduction, we don't need to do the introduction, but basically, the three ordinances as before, as all the miscellaneous law provides, a planning board with thirty-five days from the referral date, which was last week, to prepare, review, adopt, and transmit their consistency report regarding ordinances. Twelve dash twenty-two, I got to fix that, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, to the city board of commissioners. The next date is, uh.
July twenty-first?
Yes, that will be the date that will be.
It's adopted.
Second reading and adoption. So I'll go right through the ordinance summary. The primary objective of ordinance number eleven dash two thousand twenty-two is to have all documents available for review by the public, twenty-two days prior to the hearing date, instead of fifteen days, which were business days. The, the staff committee reviews that we do requires twenty-two days. So this will be consistent with the staff committee and it's calendar days, not business days. The calendar days reflect availability due to the following requirement, which is also part of the changes to require all planning board submissions to be on a flash drive in a format compatible to be viewed by the public. During the COVID situation, that worked out very well. Where we required all documentations, all planning board applications plans to be submitted on a flash drive. We upload it to the website. Everyone who wanted to see it could see it without stopping in the office. With the people that we have in, in Margate, they can't always be here. They can't always be here before the meeting. So this gives them direct access to the plans no matter where they are. And I, I, I wanted to do this last year. We just had the opportunity to do it this year. I think it's completely, it's really not consistent or inconsistent with the master plan. It's more of a procedural element and I think it really provides.
Transparency.
Transparency and fairness to people that can't come in the, in the, in the building to review the plans. So.
They had one problem with one guy before, right? Fifteen days or something, they were saying. Didn't have enough time to review.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
The primary objective of ordinance number twelve dash two thousand twenty-two is revise the fences and wall section of the city's ordinance to permit fences within the front yard setbacks, which would have to need certain specifications. Even ordinance also allows retaining walls in areas of the city where they exist and were warranted to maintain an elevated grade or to add an elevated grade to reduce tidal flooding. Also included is to apply and define third floor deck specifications for the areas not currently permitted to have third floor decks. And the primary objective to ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand twenty-two is revise the definition of a decks and have a separate definition for third floor decks under the definition section of the land use code. Prior to this change, there was third floor or decks was one definition. So we revise that deck definition to eliminate the reference to third floor decks and have a third floor deck definition. And what it's going to do is wherever third floor decks are permitted now, beachfront, beachblock, waterfront, they, they, they're still allowed to do whatever they want to do. If, if it's facing the side of the house, it's always facing the ocean, they can have a larger deck than, than others. If you're facing the water on the bay, like some of our residents take advantage of the sunsets legally on the waterfront, they can have a larger deck. But it does provide for definitions of third floor decks differentiating from what those people are allowed to do from what the, anywhere else on the island is allowed to do. And again, Marvin Gardens is not subject to this because those third floors are not permitted. So ordinance, ordinance numbers eleven, twelve and thirteen dash two thousand twenty-two advances the following objectives from the Margate City Master Plan. To review the city's history, document progress towards prior goals and objectives and develop plans and strategies for how the city can continue to adapt and thrive in the future. Again, that's part of resiliency, which is another strategy that the cities has to do for FEMA and the state. Secure safety from fire, flood, panic and other natural and manmade disasters. Again, the third floor decks, Craig, you, you advocated that because it's access from the fire department to reach people that are stuck between the, above the first floor.
Safe head.
Provide adequate light air and open space. I think we all agree that if somebody's third floor decks may occupy part of that half story, it creates more open space. From prior master plans, address, address concerns about bulk and mass that arose after adoption of the two thousand four plan. Prior planning goals were renewed, revised, abandoned where appropriate. Upon review of the master plan efforts, it became evident that items that were priorities of prior plans are no longer concerns and items that are significant concerns now are not mentioned in the prior planning efforts. This can be expected to some degree when reviewing prior master plan efforts in any community. However, the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy has shifted the discussion and priorities of many coastal communities. The steps that a coastal community such as Margate must take to ensure its long-term resist, existence has been taken for granted until recently. Section four point five point six recommends several changes in a general development regulations. So third floor decks have been consistently in front of the planning board seeking appearance to permit them within areas of the city where not permitted. The new ordinance will be consistent with what has been desired conditional approvals of these ordinances and variances. So therefore I submit to you as, to the board and I will submit to the governing body that the ordinance presented in front, in front of you tonight are consistent with the master plan. And even if they aren't consistent with the master plan, they are not inconsistent with the master plan. Particularly where the submission, which is really not master plan, regulated, but it's not inconsistent with the master plan. And again, in the name of transparency and fairness to people that are out of town, I think that's important.
My, my only question on that is if you file an application, you have to provide your public notice at least ten days in advance. So that's when, how, how's anyone even going to know if there's an application filed until they get that notice, generally speaking?
They, they, they have the right to check the agenda at any point in time. If, if they get that notice and, and that's part of the problem, they, they claim that the ten days notice is short time.
It, it is.
Well, this allows them.
The problem is, it is, but the land and people always can, and then there was a town, there's case law that they said, well, we want, you have to notify everyone from the two hundred feet. They said, well, we're, we're going to make it three hundred feet and we're going to say you have to have everything on file in advance. And I think what the court said is, go, go change the law, get the law changed. Cause yeah, but.
You can't, you can't do that is what you're saying.
Right. But I, I.
I think.
I get it. And I, I mean, I think people file their applica, they have to have their applications in any way well in advance of ten days to get on an agenda. So what do we?
But I think our, our out on that is the first application or first review is a staff committee review, which happens, which occurs way before that happens. So that, to me, that's like the completeness review to a certain degree.
Can you modify that to say that you're getting it twenty-two days in advance? And it'll be put on the city website that anything that's received or?
In the notice to the two hundred feet? Oh, I think that should be going there, that it's available on the website.
That way, if we actually get the plans in, say they come in thirty days in advance and a little blob goes up that week that, hey, we have plans for this.
But anybody that wants to review them, they call. They always call.
Yeah, but that's if they know about it. What I'm saying is if we put it in where we just, whatever comes in, it's posted to the Margate City website that a plan is available for this address.
You mean on the notice?
On the notice, that's all.
Yeah, just to the notice, it gets mailed to them in the letter.
The applicants mail the notices to the applicants. The problem is.
I don't think you can make them.
The legislature said this is what you have to do.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
Cities, you can't make your own rules. That, that was my only concern. Like we can't make it three hundred feet.
Could it be posted on the website?
I, I, I think it's more common practice now, if, if we want to do that, we could put plans online. I mean, that's not uncommon to do, but that's more of a courtesy. We're just doing it, but.
But isn't that what we're saying?
You know, we, we, we dealt with that a year or two ago and some people are coming and saying, oh, on big applications, we should have a robo-call. Now you're running a fine line. Like now.
What's big?
That's going to upset the applicants. Cause now it's like, well, you're, you're just, and, and, hey, what's big? And now you're just, you know, you got, so the legislature is supposed to strike that balance and they said, we've, this is, this is, you know, you send a certified letter ten days in advance. Some people don't get it till three days before. I, I, I get it, but that's, you know, and they yell at us, but we can't change that. That was my only point with that. But.
Yeah, I, I agree. Plus Roger would get that million calls. We don't want.
Yeah.
We don't want.
Plus, the twenty-two days is after the staff committee has already been completed.
Right.
So, I mean, they do get two heads up on this.
Are we going to go over the other two in detail?
We'll go over whatever you want to go.
I want to go over the other two.
I'm just curious.
I'm sorry.
I'm missing something here, but it's set in that one thing. You said section four, five and six recommend several changes. Are they just the three changes listed above?
Yeah, I got a, I got a revise of four, five and six.
I didn't know, I didn't know what that referred to, four, five and six.
That was left over from something.
So that's eleven, twelve and thirteen?
No, it's section, section is in here.
Oh, okay.
I'm just going to remove that.
The ordinances are the numbers and these are the sections, right?
Five.
Yes.
And do we have to take action on this tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, their meeting is before our meeting.
No, I know. I'm just saying you. A lot to comprehend in a small amount of time.
Well, you had this an hour before the meeting, so.
I thought everyone got this while, yeah, right?
No, I got it today. Whatever. Go over the, what's the first one?
Eleven.
Can, can?
No, eleven's the one about the notice. So we don't need to go over it.
All right, well, this is a fence.
You want to, huh?
The fence, twelve.
I want to go over the fence and the, and the third floor decks.
Okay.
What number?
Number twelve.
Which one's twelve? Okay, twelve is what?
So.
Fences.
I don't know if you have a color version. Probably not, but it's in boldface. So the one change is to, if Jimmy doesn't, not there to measure the height of a fence, I, I can measure the height of fence on a case by case basis. Then I added section E two, properties with a swimming pool and have a fence up to six feet in height in the same rear yard and side yard setback. Meaning, Jimmy will go with this. You'll have a guy with a pool or not have a pool with a five foot fence and the guy that's building the pool next door wants to use the neighbor's fence as his fence. So that becomes a problem. Because if the guy who has a fence and he takes it out, he's liable and the neighbor with the pool is liable.
So with two pools, you have to have two fences.
You shouldn't have to, right.
Each have to have a fence.
Yeah. You can't depend on your neighbor's fence for your own protection. Does that make sense?
Or, or if you have a pool and your neighbor doesn't have a pool, but has a fence, you got to put your own fence.
Right. Creates a liability issue that the city, where Jimmy and I are trying to keep the city out of harm's way by approving something like.
What if the neighbors come up with a legal contract? Every light. Right, that they're sharing the fence.
They, they can't share the liability. Insurance company wouldn't let them share.
Yeah, insurance company.
You can't depend on your neighbor's fence to protect your pool. Your.
I mean, what if it blows down and, and nobody's here to notice it?
I think.
Somebody's in harm's way.
I think two people with backyards without pools can probably agree. Let's, let's get one fence, but not with swimming pools.
I agree. Never know.
Okay, so that's a good one. So you have to have a double fence basically.
So number five, we removed, the section is crossed off by eliminating some confusion. A fence may be located in the front yard setback if the following conditions are met. A, the fence may be no taller than three feet from grade. And the board of commissioners have reviewed this for quite a while.
They have what?
They've reviewed these amendments for well over a month. The fence must remain on a property and not located within a public right of way. That's.
What about the existing fences that are in the right of way? Are they going to reinforce that?
Yes. They're going to have to be moved.
They will.
Would they be non-conformant?
Pardon me? It can't be on city property under any conditions.
One or two feet in, whatever the property line is.
Wherever the property line is, but you got fences that are right on the sidewalk.
But if it's been there, you, you can, you can tell me this.
It's illegal.
If it's been there for twenty-five years, say, I'm using as, don't they have a easement by prescription for the fence?
Not in, in city property. There's some law that says you can't have a prescriptive easement against municipal property. So probably not.
So if it went down the side. Okay, I get it.
They would have the option to come in for an encroachment license from the city where they have to insure it. But that's not the board.
No.
Right, right.
Yeah, we wouldn't grant anything into the.
I remember the Doris Duke case up in North Jersey with the prescription.
Part C, the fence may, shall be at least fifty percent open and may have shrubs and flowers between it and the sidewalk if desired, if the fence is like considerably behind the sidewalk.
Can we have, I asked you this before. I don't remember the answer. Can they have chain link fences?
No, I don't think we allow chain link fences. I think there's somewhere in New Orleans that does not allow chain link.
Other than that.
Okay.
Is there a design element?
No, we don't want to be dictating.
Well, then you can put a chain link fence up there.
Not if you have another area.
Here's another section in New Orleans that, it's understood that chain link fences aren't permitted. And I think there is something in New Orleans, somewhere else in here that says chain link fence.
If not, which is what I'm getting at.
We can put that under the definition.
So we can modify this.
You can't modify this now, no. Well, then how, so we can.
Well, we can modify. It's perfect. It's three foot. It's fifty percent. It's on a, it's.
And it's, and. So you want chain link fences in the front of property?
No.
They won't be approved.
They won't be approved.
Well, he thinks it's somewhere. I don't know that's in there, right.
Nobody's going to put a chain link fence. You're, you're not going to approve it, right?
No.
No.
The fence may not include a driveway. It may not be located within two feet of any driveway in the front yard setback. That's for visibility issues and also, so people can open the car door. It's not running right up to the driveway.
Two feet from the driveway.
I didn't understand six.
That's been there though, right? That's not new.
That's not new. That's, that's always been there.
So you can have a wall along the sidewalk or along your front property line?
No.
Your number six, Rich?
Yeah. Fence or wall may be constructed to height of four feet from the grade of the curve in front of the property along all waterways.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For safety purposes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Never mind.
Yeah, I missed that. Fifteen, a retaining wall may be constructed within the front yard setback if elevating the property for flood damage prevention purposes, provided that it does not negatively impact adjacent properties and meets the following requirements.
I got them if you need them.
Here it is. I got it. The retaining wall within the front yard setback may not be greater than eighteen inches from grade. Grading plan shall be submitted by licensed New Jersey professional engineer for approval by the zoning officer or licensed engineer and the entire property will be elevated for flood purposes. And also, it, it's been an issue of like, was it like Mansfield Avenue Gym where all the properties are, like where Paula lives?
Right.
Across the street.
Beachblock.
All those houses are up on hills.
Oh, where they got those.
Right. And we don't want them tearing all that out and, and lowering the property. Because then you're, you're actually going to change the flood map.
North Delman too.
Right. So there's no provision in New Orleans to allow, other than our discretion, which is not, you know, I, I think it's safer if we have it in an ordinance that allows them to maintain that retaining wall.
I agree.
To keep that property intact.
I thought we should have approved the ones.
I did too.
Osborne on the beach.
Yeah, me too.
After, after we were over, I thought it would have looked nice. Osborne on the beach where the beach club was.
Right.
They're putting nice walls.
To keep the sand and everything.
Right.
What's that look like?
They were shrubbed in.
With the state imposing this resiliency stuff down our throat, we have to prepare for that. They're looking for the higher freeboard. They, they want to elevate streets and by, you can't elevate streets unless you elevate houses. So.
Wait, it's, this is ordinance twelve is, is fences and decks? What, and ordinance thirteen is decks?
Ordinance number thirteen is the definition.
Oh, okay. So then this is one vote.
Whatever you think.
Yes.
Got it.
So, okay, mine's backwards.
I think you were pretty clear on what, what you put in. I think it's pretty.
On third floor decks?
Yeah, let's go to third floor decks. The, we're adding this whole section. Third floor decks other than those defined and not on waterfront property shall comply to the below standards. Third floor decks must be partially hidden from view with a pent roof, two thirds of the required railing height. So if it's a forty-two inch railing, they have to have about thirty-six, thirty inches of pent. Third floor decks may not occupy more than fifty percent of the area of any permitted decks below. It may not extend beyond the roof line if on a gable or gamble, gamble roof end. Meaning you have your, your roof, you don't want the deck so far out that the railing sticks up higher than that. So it's got to be in that roof gable end.
Right. It's happened recently.
Right.
Right.
We're trying to prevent that.
Yes. With a granite floor, all the way to the front of the pent, all the way to the front of the pent.
If no deck is below, the third floor deck may not exceed one third of the width of the, of the building where the deck is to be located. So if you have a thirty foot wide building and there's no deck below that you, fifty percent, it's got to be ten feet, ten feet wide. That way, more than likely, it'll ensure that it's in that roof envelope. Third floor decks may not extend further out. Uh, third floor decks may not extend further out than any deck below, including the pent roof. So you're not going to have that deck further out, it's going to be further in. The pent roof is actually inherently going to push that third floor deck area in. Third floor decks, I, I added this in based on past history that we've had here. Third floor decks on corner lots may be permitted to take advantage of either street front or both streets, with one deck provided that the aggregate area does not exceed in subsection two above.
But what about going past the roof line? How, how can you do that if you're on both sides of the house?
But on, but you're in the front yard, you're facing a street, so you're exempt from that.
In the middle, in the front yard.
Not on a corner lot.
That's what I'm saying, corner lot, at least-
Corner lot, you're allowed to push that deck to the corner, to take advantage of two Vs, two fronts.
And you can go around the corner?
No, it will be still, you're going to pick one front.
Oh, so it won't be on both sides, right?
It'll be, well, it would be on both sides. It's not going to be wrapped.
That's what I mean.
But you can push it towards the corner like Steve Aglivo did on the-
Madison, Madison.
All right.
That's a tremendous view, and it'd be a shame to punish somebody to take advantage of that corner.
Go the whole the other way, it could have been, it could have been open.
And you're not, you're not, are you talking about Mansfield Avenue or?
No.
No.
Madison and Monmouth.
Oh, I wasn't here for that one.
And third floor deck shall not have any solid roof unless within the defined building envelope, meaning that that third floor deck can't have a roof on top.
Are you allowed to do that now, or something?
No, but I wanted to.
I saw one.
But you, you can if it's in the building envelope line, if it's in the setback line. We don't want another roof, we don't want another structure on top of a third floor deck.
If it's part of the existing frame roof and it's tucked in, it's remitting.
Well, if, there might be one there today, but there was, there's no provision against it.
Aglivo's roof.
He opened the raft of base, continuation of the existing roof.
You can't build a third floor deck over that.
But it's a flat roof.
It says nothing in here about facing the street. It's in the definitions.
Oh, doesn't have to be in here? Well, then let's go over the definitions.
All right, so as you can see on section, ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand twenty-two, you can see the change for the deck definition, and we added the third floor deck definition. Third floor deck shall be permitted on the single-family, two-family, and multifamily homes with the site plan approvals directly facing and adjacent to the bay, lagoon, Minne Creek, Atlantic Ocean, and water bodies, and shall be placed on the facade of the house facing the water only, limited to one deck per residential unit. Third floor deck shall be permitted in all single-family and two-family houses throughout the city of Margate, provided that they face the street, and such third floor decks shall be subject to all setback requirements and abide by the design standards in section one seventy-five dash twenty-six N, which is what we just reviewed.
Okay, on that note, I just want to bring to your attention that, um, I'm already getting calls that we're allowing third floor decks great, and when I explained that it has to face the street, oh my God, oh my God, I want to take on the even side of the street, I want to take advantage of the sunsets, and I've got six applications that, or, or six houses being designed with back decks to take advantage of the view. My, and I, I'm just letting you know that this is out there, I'm just-
They're going to get variance.
I understand, I'm not pushing for this, I'm saying that that's an issue, and I know people are talking about it now, so.
Yeah. Well, I look out the window.
Well, those are on Minne Creek, M-I-N-N-I-E.
Yeah, what's this M-I-N-I? Who are these people? Did you see it? M-I-N-I, they spelled it?
Yeah, I took it to hell.
That's all that matters.
It's like spelling Marvin Gardens the wrong way.
Rear decks, period.
Pardon me?
We're not permitting rear decks, period, right?
Oh, yeah, second floor.
Second floor, but not third floor.
If it's within the building's envelope, yes, you can.
Unless you live on Minne Creek or the Bay or the area. In the rear.
Not third floor, no.
That's what I'm saying, in the rear. We don't want them looking at people's backs.
It's an evasion, it's-
We approved one two months ago, right?
One.
Oh, we did, we did.
Yeah, I look out my window and I see it, and to me, it's, it's fine, I don't see a problem with this.
Well, you'd like to-
They have great sunset views, I mean, that's what they want, that's what they want.
But that one that was approved is not, you're not seeing a sunset from that, you might be seeing the moonrise.
No, you'll see the sunset from that. Third floor? I used to see it from my house, when it dove over this house, the way it was back.
From the back of your house?
Yeah, at the back.
But the back of this is facing Atlantic City.
No, third floor, I know it's on the even side.
No, this is even side, people want it, so, but also, I always said, if we ever do pass a third floor deck and then specific rules like we are right now, no, we're immediately going to get complaints and say they want more. So that's what's happening.
They can do that.
I understand, they can come for a variance.
Right.
If they come for a variance, they come for the front.
Well, they can't have it, you, you can go for a variance for anything. Yeah, it has to face the street. Yeah.
I have one more question, just to be clear. Like, go back to the retaining wall, the eighteen-inch retaining wall, so that can go right to the property line?
That can go wherever it is, but yeah, it should be at the property line if it's, if it's new.
Right, because remember, we don't own a Lundys house on Salmberg. Right, right, yeah.
Right.
Roger, it says site plan approvals, that, that just applies to multi-family homes, right, in that definition section? Where it just says third floor deck shall be approved on single families, two families, and multi-families with site plan approvals.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought.
That's a big, nobody can go in the rear.
That's a big one.
Anywhere.
Nobody.
Nobody.
Only in the front.
It's the one side of the street could take advantage of the sunset if they had it on the back of their house, on your side of the street.
The outside of the street can all get sunset views.
Yes.
But the other side can only get sunrise views.
Take a look at the window.
On the third floor only, Craig, if they want a sunset view, they can do it on the second floor.
We need to vote on this?
But you're looking at the sunset, you're not looking at the-
Uh, we're going to wait till nine o'clock, that's, we're going to discuss it till then, and then we'll-
Can we go?
Then we have to vote on it.
Speaking of sunsets. So do we have to make a motion on this?
Yes, I, if, if, I don't see why, if they were sort of adopted as one, right, we can, I think we can do one vote. Basically, our job is to make a, 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 we've reviewed the ordinance to make a determination that, in our opinion, these ordinances are consistent or not inconsistent with our master plan, and we can make, and we send that back to the governing body, and then to do that, I've-
But we can't vote separately on each one, this is one vote on everything.
If there was a-
It's presented as one.
It's presented as one, I mean, if it's going to-
And this is a yes or no vote?
Yeah, I think we can almost do an all in favor. And, and, and then we'll probably need to memorialize something in a short resolution, which part of the motion will be authorize Rich to sign that before the next commission meeting, and I can send it over to Scott Abbott or Joanne.
Just to be safe, though, you probably should do a roll call and do a yes and a no vote, that way it's on the record.
Then, that's fine, we can do that. So I think someone needs, so we have three ordinances, ordinance number eleven, twenty-two, twelve, twenty-two, and thirteen, twenty-two. We went over all the amendments they make to our zoning ordinance, so we need a motion, um, determining that these, uh, uh, ordinance amendments are consistent or not inconsistent with our master plan, and authorizing me to prepare a short resolution, memorializing that, and allowing Rich to, to sign it prior to our next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Tom Collins?
Yes.
Jim Gallantino?
Yes.
Margaret Guber Nalti? Craig Palmisano?
Yes.
Stephen Giasecki?
Yes.
Michael Richmond?
Yes.
And Richard Patterson? So that's six in favor and one opposed.
Okay, very good.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting? Jim, Jim?
I'd, I'd like to stay here all night. Why do you put no?
I don't like fences.
We need a second.
The fences, they put it together, I think it's a, it's been that way for a hundred years. I think, uh, city commission comes and goes, the planning boards like the Senate, we kind of have continuity. And to change the face of Margate like that, I think is a travesty, and it was lumped together with everything else, so I agree with everything else, but-
And I can-
And I wanted you, I knew it was going to pass, but I couldn't in my heart. Becker told me when I got on the board, do what you think is right, and I just can't approve the front yard fences.
And I could carve it out if you wanted to.
Okay.
Has the meeting been?
Do we, uh, all in favor of to adjourn? I opposed, opposed? No, I just opposed, I'm going to be the no voter.